I'm going to call to order the Tuesday, January 19th, 2016, meeting of the Irelde County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I'd like to open with a moment of silent prayer or reflection. At this time, before we rise to say the pledge of allegiance, we have a special guest, and I've asked Commissioner Robertson to introduce.
All right. Thank you very much, Chairman Mallory. We hear an awful lot about, you know, the quality and caliber of our youth and the future of our nation. And tonight, we're privileged to have a young man who actually exemplifies all that is good with America and with the youth and with the future of our country. We are privileged to have with us tonight a member of the Boy Scouts of America, Will Weaver is a Star Scout. He's a member of Troop 171, sponsored by Williamson Chapel United Methodist Church in Mooresville, North Carolina, and under the leadership of Scout Master Frank Banzoff. Will Weaver's a Star Scout, and he's working on his Communications Merit Badge. And one of those requirements is to attend a meeting like this. So since we have him in our audience, I'm going to ask if Scout Will Weaver will come up and lead us in the pledge to our flag.
Please stand.
(inaudible)
And good luck on your eagle badge. At this point, Mr. Smith, we have adjustments to the agenda.
Yes, sir. We do have two adjustments. The first one is under appointments before the board, and we're going to call this Item B. And Ms. Darba Scaff, Executive Director and CEO of the Statesville Housing Authority, is going to make a presentation. And the second item I'd like to add is a closed-session matter concerning personnel, and that's General Statute Reference 143-31811A6.
Is there a motion to approve the adjustments to the agenda?
Motion to approve.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. We have no special recognitions or awards this evening. Moving on to Item 6, appointments before the board. First matter we have is a request from the Statesville Family YMCA to waive landfill charges during $2.5 million renovation. And Ms. Debbie Howell will be speaking on behalf of the Statesville Y.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
I am Debbie Howell. I have been hired by the Statesville Family YMCA to conduct their capital campaign. We are raising $2.5 million to do a complete renovation of our building. Now, I know that you all received the documents and the explanations of what we're doing, and I'm sure that if you have been in the Y or you're members of the Y, that you will agree that it is in dire need of a renovation. What we attempt, what we are attempting to do is turn a lot of the space into classroom and areas where there'll be added functionality to the building. I have with me tonight Edie and Walter Holland, who are on the campaign trail with me and working very hard. Edie has been on the board of the YMCA here in Statesville since 2008, and now serves on the North Carolina Northwest YMCA, which Statesville Family YMCA is a branch of that. And what we'd like to ask is that the board waive all of our landfill fees. Our estimator for the project through G.L. Wilson has estimated that it will be 32, about 32 pools. Now, if we contact with one specific trash company in town, all of those pools will not go to the landfill. They have their own recycling center, so a lot of them won't go. But I don't know how many will. So we were asking that you consider waiving those fees for us, for this renovation. Currently, we have raised approximately $50,000 in in-kind fee, in-kind donations and $325,000 in monetary pledges. So we're well on our way, and we would appreciate any consideration that you could give to our request. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Walter Holland.
Thank you very much, Ms. Howell.
Yeah, I'll just take a couple of minutes to speak on behalf of the Y. I feel like I'm talking to the Y when I come in, because there are at least three people on this board who I see at 5:30 in the morning at the YMCA almost every weekday. So we definitely have users and friends up here. For those of you who don't know much about the Y and its mission, we're a wonderful resource for this county. We give away about $130,000 a year in supported or free memberships or supported or free camp for citizens of this county who cannot afford to use the YMCA. And so what we're asking the board to consider is to recognize the fact that the YMCA is a wonderful resource in this county. We give a lot of money back to the county and to its citizens, and we are asking that the board consider, as Debbie said, waiving the landfill fees. There could be, you know, the dollar amount, probably the top dollar amount would be $7,500. It's probably going to be less than that, but that's why we're here, and we appreciate your giving consideration to this. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Holland.
Are there any questions or comments from members of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'll express a couple of concerns I have. I've always taken the approach in regard to the landfill that it's not my landfill, it's not the Board of Commissioners' landfill, it's citizens' landfill, and that we're merely stewards of that. The second thing to mention is that it's an enterprise fund, and nothing brings you into the realm of sobriety quicker than realizing that you're running a business. And an enterprise fund is distinct from the general fund, and that in the general fund, money becomes fungible. It goes into a big pot of money, and after a while, you forget where it came from, and it gets moved around. Oftentimes, it's a rather laborious process to figure out what goes where and what is equitable for it to be appropriated, so you wind up with a little bit less, and nobody seems to be harmed by it. An enterprise fund is a little bit different. We charge enough for the tipping fees to cover the operational cost and the short-term capital cost of operating a landfill, but we also charge enough to pay for future construction at the landfill for the next sale and the purchase of property. So basically, what happens is your tipping fee at the landfill pays for the operational costs, the replacement of equipment, and enough on top of that to pay for the next purchase of land, which Commissioner Robertson oftentimes congratulates us on for buying the land at the golf course, and I agree with him. I do think it's one of the better long-term decisions this board has ever made, but the ability to pay for that came from the tipping fees. So basically, what happens at the landfill is you're paying for airspace. And my concern is if we begin down the road of giving away airspace, then we have increased the per-cubic yard of whatever airspace is remaining. And if we begin then with, and grant this request, then it won't be the last request we ever make. And how many more requests will be made? And in total, what will be the total cost of those requests? And inevitably, if we do too much of this, then we will simply have to increase the cost of the tipping fees. We'll increase that cost to a lot of people who are, I'm not going to be, paint too dark a picture by mentioning the widow lady, but at some point, we'll increase the tipping fees on widow ladies if we become generous to the extreme. So I have some degree of hesitancy in beginning this process, and it is something we struggled with in the past. I know that we forgave the tipping fees at Davis Hospital, if that ever happens, but that was pretty much right-hand, left-hand money. We could have billed ourselves for it and paid it out of the general fund, and it would have gone into enterprise fund. So degree, you know, you can understand that, but to begin to do this for outside agencies, my question is, where does it end? I believe this won't be the last one, and what will be the total cost of that over time? And how much will it increase the per-cubic yard cost at the landfill? And how much would we subsequently have to increase tipping fees for everyone else? I think that's a valid concern.
Well, we've always kind of acted without some guidelines. I think we've had some unwritten ones that we generally followed. I wouldn't be against maybe tabling this for the moment and kind of looking at some staff recommendations and also look at what were some of the kind of criteria for when we approved them in the past and when we disapproved them, and maybe we just formalize it or at least make it a little bit more concrete in the future. I'm willing to press, take a look at doing that.
I think that we have to be very careful, because we've got some pretty stiff years coming ahead of us, and I think we have to be very careful funding or waiving fees for entities that we don't fund their budget. And we're going to have to do some belt-tightening in the future, so we have to be very careful as to what we waive and give away.
Yeah. I agree. Our staff always gives us very, very good information in planning for the future. There's two things they consistently miss. That's the jail and the landfill. They always tell us the next landfill is going to last this many years, and it never does. I'm not finding fault, but it just doesn't. It always fills up faster than it said, and the jail always fills up faster than it said. I'm not saying I would do any better job, but these things come upon you a lot quicker than you anticipate sometimes. We need to be careful.
Any additional comments? Mr. Chairman, we'll send this back to staff. Let staff take a look at it. Mr. Norman, I believe that, you know, given the, that that's a prudent action under the circumstances, we have some legal issues we need to look at in terms of source of funding. This enterprise fund has to stand on its own. To the extent that there have been waivers in the past, they have been limited to household waste. That was the last actual policy concerning waiver of tipping fees at the landfill. You know, the great good that the Statesville YMCA does is not the issue here, nor is the efficacy of the expansion and its ability to better serve the Statesville and Irelde County communities. But we need to understand the full import and ramifications of policy exceptions, because that opens the door to a multitude of other equally important organizations, and this enterprise fund has to be able to balance its books. And if we waive their fees periodically, then they're going to be in the negative, then we're going to have to make that up out of our general fund, and that's just a back door kind of line item. And so I think we need to be very deliberative about how we go about, you know, supporting our organizations in a way that's going to be legal and binding in the future so that everyone understands the rules of the road. So I believe that if there's a motion to table this matter until we've had opportunity for staff to further review, and then we can bring it back up. I won't commit to another two weeks. It may be a little longer than that.
Mr. Chairman, we might want to inquire of the folks at the YMCA under what time constraints they're under. They might be pushing some type of construction deadline. I'm not sure.
(inaudible).
Okay. Okay. So we have a little time to be working on this. Okay. And you're in the midst of your capital campaign. That's continuing on. Is that correct? We certainly would encourage people to reach out and support the YMCA and all the wonderful programs that it does, particularly for youngsters who, and families who cannot afford otherwise to be participating in those services and programs. Okay. So is there a motion to table, as I've outlined? Motion by Vice Chairman Norman. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Okay. We will be back in touch, our staff, as well as us individually, as you'd like to interact with us, obviously, and we can keep you posted. Thank you, Ms. Howell, and Dr. Holland, for your comments and support. Moving on to second appointment before the board, the Statesville Housing Authority, Ms. Darba Scaff.
Thank you for having me.
Well, welcome.
General Mallory, members of the council, Ms. Gaeter, Mrs. John Delena, boardperson of the Statesville Housing Authority and the Arda Statesville Community Reimbursement Corporation, my colleagues there here, residents and friends. The Statesville Housing Authority mission is to provide affordable, quality housing for low-to-moderate-income persons and to improve the quality of life, encapsulating the guiding principle of building community bridges through partnerships. With this mission, the Arda Community Reimbursement Corporation was conceived. S.H.A. is to build resilient families by collaborating with several public entities and private organizations to provide a wide array of supportive services for residents, enabling them to become productive and self-sufficient citizens of Irelde County, in like manner to further the furtherance of fair housing amongst all that live in the county. Over the last decade, our entities have placed increasing emphasis on becoming nationally recognized as the premier provider of affordable housing. We have also worked to adapt and evolve in reality of a dynamic national and regional economy and changing federal, state, and local resource allocation priorities by altering, revamping, and supplementing what have traditionally become successful programs and models of operation. Today, our focus is on preserving our present affordable housing stock in Irelde County. We recognize that it's not enough to provide sustainable, affordable housing. We must also ensure that the housing we provide meet qualitative standards that are acceptable to the greater Irelde County, the communities that reside here, and the citizens that try to make this their home. We actively pursue opportunities to improve housing quality and to add new additional units of affordable housing whenever economically and financially appealing prospects occur. The overriding recent and present objective has been to pursue these opportunities with caution in a manner consistent with our core mission and principles. A further objective has to be to improve the quality of existing affordable housing stock in a manner that has been similar to other housing providers in the surrounding areas and jurisdictions. Equally important, it has been our emphasis on enhancing and enriching the quality of life for all Irelde citizens. This includes not only providing the opportunities that are current, but also actively and favorably impact the aspects of the life. We operate under the knowledge that a stronger, resilient population will have increasing self-sufficiency. We currently engage in four major activities: affordable housing management, tenant-based renter assistance, resident support services for all in the county, housing development and rehabilitation. S.H.A. is a major corporate entity within the county. We have over $38 million of assets, an annual operating budget of approximately just over $10 million, and a capital program over $735,000 annually. We have contributed over $1 million to tax base by creating 100 new homeowners in the last 10 years. We were instrumental in the Dollar General presence in Statesville and have contributed over half a million dollars in economic credits in Irelde County. We also provide $4.6 million in housing choice voucher rents assistance to landlords within the county per year. S.H.A. will continue to sustain the community to the preservation and expansion of the supply of affordable housing for all the residents of Irelde County. We're going to use this vehicle for promoting improvements of not only the physical, social, and economic fabric of our community, but also the quality of life of all we serve. We anticipate and adopt the changes in the economic environment, funding priorities, market conditions, and stakeholder needs and expectations. We will increase our corporate capacity by continuing to reach traditions of the need of our community and the directive of our board. There is a lack of affordable housing in Irelde County, a problem that is growing more acute due to the loss of affordable housing, limited production of affordable units, and a lack of enforceable housing quality standards. It is unfair and sometimes almost subhuman to see some of the conditions that are considered rental housing. In some instances, we have found elderly and children living in housing with broken windows, limited and poor plumbing, electrical issues, and lead-based paint. We must compel landlords to meet the minimum housing quality standards. We understand the margin of profitability of affordable housing is extremely limited. However, the difference between production and operating expenses and the income generated provides little incentive for more housing developers to pursue affordable housing development and landlord to participate. However, there must be accountable measurements put in place to guide the process. In 2013, we made veterans a preference on our waiting list and have formed a close relationship with the Piedmont Veteran Assistance Council of Irelde County. We have invested over $310,000 to provide a veteran transitional facility and have partnered with various community agencies to meet the conscious decision of providing housing for those that have served us so that we have safety and sanity of the day. As you are aware, the administrative burden that the economy has consciously deposited on us, on us over the past several years are becoming more and more deplorable. In this light, we are asking distinguished gentlemen to make homelessness for veterans a priority and provide tremendous and noticeable support to the effort to end veteran homelessness in Irelde County and to increase the availability of affordable, safe, and functional homes for all. We believe that with this small step taken by you, we will strive to move the mountains of homelessness, blighted and deprived communities, and create successful homeownership, rental housing for those that have the desire, opportunity, and pleasure to call Irelde County home for themselves and their family. Thank you for your time, and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you very much, Ms. Scaff. You mentioned that Statesville Housing Authority, I believe, was venturing out into a joint-type venture with the Piedmont Veterans Assistance Council, and I believe a number of other volunteer organizations, nonprofit organizations, to build or renovate a home for homeless veterans.
Yes, sir.
And who will be administering that or running the program itself?
We are in part, Piedmont Veteran Assistance Council is a new, I don't know if all of you are aware, is a committee of people that have come together to provide assistance to veterans, whether it's food, shelter, and transportation or rail services that is much needed in the county. One of the things that were lacking was having a transitional facility for people that are coming from homelessness, that have been through the transitional shelter process, to have somewhere to go as a hub before they move into permanent housing, is what we, the Housing Authority, provides permanent housing. We've been working with the Fifth Street Ministries to serve as the contingent management agent once the house has been completed. The turnkey date for the house is the end of February. Almost 95% of the property has been completed.
So the business model here is that you're providing the home?
Yes, sir.
And Fifth Street is providing the coordination of services and placement of veterans that are appropriate to go into that facility?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And then in addition to that, once they move into that facility, when they graduate, whatever program is into that facility, with the preference being now on public housing with leads, they can either move to public housing, or we are committed, we are actually actively creating new revenue of housing for them to be able to move to. We're creating duplexes and other single-family houses so that they can create somewhere that they can call permanent residence. And to add a point on that, General Mallory, it's not just the veterans that we're going forward with this, the greater idea is to provide social housing for those people that have worked within our public sector in Irelde County.
Any further questions or comments? Thank you very much, Ms. Scaff.
Thank you for having me.
For what you do every day and your staff. And look forward to hearing more about the project for the veterans transitional housing and the other housing opportunities that you are providing for those who need the assistance to get a leg up and move forward in their lives. Thank you. We'll now move on to administrative matters. Mr. Chairman, if you could summarize those, those are all...
Mr. Chairman, skipped over the public hearings.
Oh, I'm sorry. I want to get to the... Well, I'll tell you what, why don't we do the administrative matters while we're talking about it? I'll tell you what, why don't we do the administrative matters while we're talking about it? Why don't you summarize the administrative matters quickly and then we'll move on and press them in the consent agenda?
At the pre-agenda meeting before the 7 o'clock, the following items were discussed: a request from the Planning Division to approve the 2015 Single Family Rehabilitation Loan Program; a request from administration for approval of a contract with Mosley Architects for the design and services for the proposed GL expansion; a request from tax administration to approve refunds and releases; and a request for approval of the January 5, 2016 minutes.
Okay. Any further comment on the consent agenda? Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Vice Chairman Norman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Well, now, move back to item seven, public hearings. First is a public hearing for consideration of an economic development incentive for Project Gruper. I believe Mr. Merrick is here.
Good evening, Chairman Mallory, Commissioners, staff. Stateful Regional Development comes before you tonight to request your consideration for an industrial development incentive for an existing stateful-based company that is looking to expand its operations in the county. We have been working with this company under the codename Project Gruper. The company is involved in the metal fabrication industry, one of the county's target sectors. Their intent is to add approximately 24,000 square feet of additional manufacturing space at their current location and invest $2.7 million in new machinery. For competitive reasons, the company wishes to remain anonymous at this time. Upon completion of proposed expansion in late 2016, Project Gruper will result in a net new investment of $3,278,000 in Arido County and would result in the addition of 21 new jobs paying a wage in excess of the county average over five years. Stateful Regional Development is pleased to recommend, in accordance with the Arido County Industrial Development Incentives Program and General Statute 158-7.1, that an unnamed company identified as Project Gruper be granted a performance-based incentive as follows. The improvement period will be January 1, 2016 through December 31, 2016. The projected capital investment of the improvements will be $3,278,000. The company will add a total of 21 employees within five years, with five new jobs added in the first six months following completion of the project. The incentive will equal 80% of the county property tax liability on the net new capital investment over five years as specified by county policy, or a total incentive of $58,703. I would be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Are there any questions for Mr. Merrick? Seeing none, at this time, I'll call into open session the public hearing for the consideration of an economic development incentive for Project Gruper. I do not have anyone that has signed up for this public hearing to be heard. I'll ask if there's anyone in the audience that may have missed that opportunity that is here that would like to speak on this matter to please identify yourself. Seeing none, I'll close this public hearing and ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to approve an economic incentive of $58,703 over a five-year period based on the company's investment of $3.2 million and contingent upon a contract being executed within 180 days.
Motion by Commissioner Robertson. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Merrick. Move on to a public hearing to consider a request from the Planning Division staff for text amendments to the Land Development Code. Mr. Matthew Todd will be speaking for the department, and this is a matter that was continued from our last meeting to allow for any additional public input and staff revisions. So, if you could summarize again, Mr. Todd, the request.
Good evening to the board. Yes, over the last two weeks, just for the record, we did not receive any additional comments on the proposed text amendments. We were proposing to have two text amendments, two different chapters. One was on landscaping, the other on the table permitted uses. Both received unanimous recommendation coming out of Planning Board. With the landscaping provisions, we were looking at adding some exceptions to add some staff flexibility. We were also changing the NB zoning to a lower requirement because there's no outdoor storage with NB, so we didn't feel that the higher standards for the landscaping were necessary. We updated one of the tables to make them more user-friendly and other minor changes. Since our last meeting, we did make one amendment, and before, when it came to landscaping, we went as far as to measure the diameter and six inches above grade. We're just saying a minimum of four feet high for that section, again, to make it more simplistic for the end user. The table permitted uses, what we focused on with that was consolidating uses. There were some unnecessary repetitions, some consistencies we were trying to line up, and revise and eliminate outdated uses, and then also add new uses to the table. And I'd be happy to answer any more specific questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Todd? If there being none, I do want to give a shout-out to the Chairman of the Planning Board, Jeff McNeely. Thank you for being here, and thank your board for the great work that they do every month and teeing up for us, all the different land development issues and zoning issues. Please convey our appreciation for their hard work and the staff as well. At this time, I'll call a public hearing to order to consider a request from the Planning Division staff for text amendments to the Land Development Code. Is there a motion in this matter? Or anyone to be heard? I haven't gotten anybody that has signed up for hearing. They're seeing none, hearing none. Close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Motion to approve the text amendments.
Okay. Motion by Vice Chairman Norman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Now move on to item nine, announcement of vacancies occurring on boards and commissions. We have two announcements for positions on the Animal Grievance Committee. We will have a hearing on the appointment of those individuals two weeks from now. If anyone is interested in serving on the Animal Grievance Committee, they can go to the Arido County website and be able to find out more about that committee and to be able to submit an application. We do have two volunteers who have volunteered to serve again, so they will be duly considered. Moving on to item 10, appointments to boards and commissions. There's one appointment to the Arido County Board of Health. Dr. James Hunter has resigned. We appreciate his service. And Dr. Tim Burgess has volunteered to serve. There is no other applicant. Is there any discussion? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would make the motion that we appoint Dr. Tim Burgess to the Arido County Board of Health.
Motion by Commissioner Bowles. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Finally, we have two appointments to the Transportation Advisory Board. Ms. Sandy Vinson and Amanda Udi have volunteered to serve there. Is there any discussion? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to approve by Sandy Vinson and Amanda Udi. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item 11, unfinished business. Two weeks ago, we discussed providing direction to our county's member to the Charlotte Regional Transportation Planning Organization relative to how to vote on whether to, once again, recommend proceeding forward with a previous recommendation by the Board to go forward with toll lanes on Interstate 77. We have taken the last two weeks as individual board members to avail ourselves of a number of different arguments and information provided from both the general public as well as interested parties, to include other governmental bodies and the State Department of Transportation and others. And at this point, the Governor has requested that we validate the decision to proceed forward. So, everyone is aware on the Transportation Planning Organization in Charlotte, the Charlotte City Council controls over 45% of the votes, with 31 votes out of a total of 67 or 68. So, at their last meeting, the Charlotte City Council voted to validate and to recommend that their member vote their 31 votes in favor of proceeding. This board, in May, asked the Governor to delay signing any binding contracts pending a more complete review of our options and due diligence relative to the terms of the proposed contract. That request was not observed, and those documents were signed shortly thereafter. So, at this point, I would like to ask Mr. Commissioner Robertson to share his perspectives and any other board member as we move forward.
If I can, without having to rehash a decade of history on this, just to let everyone know, when we say the word toll roads, we're not talking about a toll where you drive through some toll booth and throw two quarters in a basket and the arm goes up, or else you have some device on your windshield and you can go through some easy-pass lanes and don't pay it at all. These were supposed to be managed lanes, which meant that there was only going to be one lane that was a toll, the rest of them were free. And people go, how on earth did you come to this point? And if I could, I'll be very brief and give some background. This project, this dilemma that we find ourselves in, has been a long time coming. In the state of North Carolina, there are currently just under $19 billion of road requests, and we have just under three to pay for it. So, there's gonna be, it's almost a six-to-one ratio of road requests and road funding. So, whenever we talk about tolls, tolls are a way of getting roads built quicker. Widening of Highway 150, somebody sent me an email not too long ago and said, gee, Highway 150 needs to be widened. We said, hey, it's good news, it's on the list. And they were like, fantastic, and it will be widened in 2025. Holy cow, 2025. I mean, that's the kind of lag time that there are for a lot of these road construction projects. So, the fact that tolls were offered as a solution to get I-77 widened, you know, it wasn't like, oh gee whiz, yeah, tolls would be fun, let's do it. It was either to do that or not have any widening at all. The problem came is when they actually put a contract together with a single bidder. And there were provisions in the contract that I think had some unintended consequences of tremendous magnitude, and that's when the opposition finally really gelled. The problem is, is in order to get, the state has guaranteed, in this private-public partnership with this company called Centra, the state has guaranteed that they will receive a certain amount of money in tolls each year. Well, if you have lanes that are free and lanes that are told, the only way you're going to get people on those toll lanes is to make sure that there's lots of traffic on the free lanes. And the fact that this contract was for 50 years gave lots of people, because that certainly, I'd like to be alive 50 years from now, I'd love to be alive and able to drive 50 years from now, probably not going to happen. So, in essence, for the rest of my life, if we support this, we basically have supported an initiative that guarantees that I-77 will have bad traffic for 50 years. The other problem that they ran into with this project is the tolls were going to be based upon length of drive, and it is very difficult to give ingress and egress on and off the interstate at each exit, because somewhere, that toll lane, which is in the middle, is, you know, those people have to go over two lanes to the right to get off on an exit, or they got to fly over somehow the three lanes in the opposing direction. And all of those things are incredibly expensive. And when you look, we've got exit 36, 35, 33, 30, 28, 25, 23. So, basically, the problem that they've had with this toll concept is you can't have some sort of a tolling station every two miles. It's just, and it ran the cost of this project way, way, way high. But I would say that the thing that gave people most cause for concern and most of the opposition, and I realize that there's some people who think that the interstate ought to be widened, there's got to be some money, and we shouldn't have to pay any. I understand, and that's probably not reality. But on the flip side, I would say that where we are right now with this contract is, it's quite a bad contract. But the two things that really, I think, rubbed people the wrong way was the fact that during this whole process, the North Carolina Department of Transportation never offered the CRTPO or any of the other previous transportation planning organizations, we were never presented with a no-toll option. It was always, always, always presented, if you're gonna widen I-77, you will have tolls, period. There was never an option B to vote on. So, you know, sometimes when you force people's hand, they tend to resent it. Then, of course, then I would say the other big complaint is the fact that by design, we guarantee traffic on the free lanes for at least 50 years. So, we are in a position right now where the contract has been signed. If we do nothing, this managed lane toll project proceeds, and the contract has been signed for a while. And we're in a position where we either have, we either pay the tolls and suffer the consequences of this 50 years, or there's some penalties. And the penalties that are in this contract are that as an incentive- And the penalties that are in this contract are that, as an incentive to get the CRTPO to support the contract, there was $145 million in so-called bonus road money, of which about 77 million of that, about half of it, was going to be for projects in the region, but the other half was, in essence, projects that enabled the toll concept to work. The other penalty that we will face if we break the contract is the cost of breaking the contract, the way it is written, and it is not, this is not concrete, this is very, very subjective. But we've heard any figures from below $50 million to $82 million to $300 million, which incidentally, I don't believe that it costs $300 million to break a $700 million contract when no dirt's been moved yet. I mean, that's just beyond belief. I don't believe that that's true. But the fact of the matter is, is there will be penalties. I think more people tend to believe it'd be closer to 100 million than to zero. And that money is most likely to come out of this region's road construction dollars. What we don't know is, will it come out in one year, or over three years, or over five years? But we know that we will pay that amount. So there's no easy choices. So if we vote, and I'll make a recommendation, if we vote to ask the Governor to break the contract, we will lose the bonus money, we will lose the penalty that we'll be responsible to pay for breaking the contract, and, here's the most important part, and the moment that we break that contract, there are no plans, no funding, no options to widen I-77. And remember, I just said, we have a plan to widen Highway 150, and it's already been through all the process, and that happened by 2025. So everybody needs to understand, we don't have, we're not choosing between, you know, between sweet and sour. Both of these options are pretty bad. I'm going to, and before I make my recommendation, I just want to say one thing. I will give credit to Governor McCrory. He's been blamed for a product, project, and a process that started long before he ever took office. What he did, and there were a lot of people involved in this, but we will give him credit, he was in the lead. What he did was, he took politics out of the priorities of where roads were built and with what money. And they came up with formulas to try to make it more fair, more equitable, and less a political spoils system. That's the good news. The bad news is, we just needed him to widen one interstate before he did that, and that didn't happen. But that really was, it's good long-term for the state, it's just, we were, you know, unfortunately, we didn't get our road widened before they made those rules. The second thing I will give credit to is, the General Assembly used to raid the highway fund to pay for other things, and I will give credit where credit's due. The General Assembly has done a good job of getting highway, your gas tax money, your highway fund money, back to highways and not paying for other stuff. So those are all good things, but the fact of the matter is, there simply isn't enough money. I would recommend, the CRTPO meets tomorrow night, and I would like to vote not, based upon the way I feel and my conclusions and my recommendations, I would like my vote to represent this Board, but I would recommend that you give me this guidance. And if you'd like to give me more, I'll take it. I would like for you to allow me to vote against any motion that's made to approve the current contract or endorse the current contract with managed lanes by Centra. Okay? Number two is that I be allowed to approve and support all the other aspects of the CRTPO transportation plan. And I know that it's trying to be worded in a way that if we say no to managed lanes, that they will stop every other project in the region for two years, which I think is just ludicrous. But if there's a way to vote to support all the other plans, except for the managed lanes on I-77, I would like the authority to vote to approve those. And those are my two requests for your guidance, and I'll listen.
Do we want to retain that as a motion and then further discuss it?
Yes, we can.
Certainly. Well, then, the motion has been duly made by Commissioner Robertson. Further discussion? Mr. Bowles?
I couldn't agree more with you, Ken. I think you're dead on, from the research that I have done, absolutely, that's the right thing to do.
I agree. I'll just add a couple of things. And I know it's not welcome in all quarters, but the fact of the matter is, for probably the last, at least 30 years, wouldn't you say, Mr. Robertson, if they hadn't robbed the Highway Trust Fund, some years of at least a billion dollars to fund their favorite collectivist welfare program, probably I-77 would have been widened a long time ago.
Long time ago.
But the liberals did that, and they just got a bad habit of doing those kind of things. The problem is exacerbated a couple of things. It was estimated in 2013 that we would, that Americans collectively would burn about 14.2 billion gallons of gasoline. Due to the recession and the incentives that the federal government started implementing, we did not burn 14.2 billion gallons of gasoline, we burned only 12.9 billion gallons of gasoline. So they created incentives for us to buy more fuel-efficient vehicles, and we did that, and we burned less gas, and they got less money. So be careful of what you ask for. It's estimated by, we missed roughly about 10%, it's estimated by the year 2020, we could miss that as much as 25% in miles driven and gallons of gas burned, which I guess, if you're one of those people who think it, well, if you're Al Gore, who I believe his target date, when we would all be underwater, I think is a week from tomorrow. I think we're gonna survive that. I would like to mention a couple of things that, and I'll keep saying this every chance I get, that if Frank Mitchell were here tonight, he would substantiate what I'm about to say. That in February of 2011, Mr. Mitchell and I were summoned to Morseville, and we were told by the DOT in February of 2011 that the toll was a done deal, and that was an informational meeting only, and no input would be taken. If I could, I got a bad habit of offering these suggestions, whether I wanted it or not, but since my time on the Board is limited, I'm just gonna pretty much start doing whatever I please. I got a revolutionary idea, though, folks. Why don't you build roads where the cars are? You could really do that, quite simply, based on vehicle registration. You know how many miles of road that you have in a particular transportation district? They should know by now about how many dollars a year it costs to maintain a mile of road, and you have a maintenance fund. And then periodically, you look at the increase in vehicle registration in that district, and you say, huh, a lot of people are buying cars there, maybe we need to build roads there. They're trying to get there, but they still got a long way to go. It has been an improvement, but I won't reiterate what I said in the last meeting, but I agree with Mr. Robertson. I think his is a prudent approach, and I will support the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, Vice Chairman Norman?
Mr. Chairman, I've told you from the very beginning, the answer's no. This thing has stuck from the very beginning. You can put a skirt on, a skunk, and it still thinks. That's what this is, so my answer's still no.
Skirt on, a skunk.
How do you really feel about it? At this time, I'd like for you to know.
You know, I, this Board, I referenced before the fact that on the 19th of May of this year, we passed a resolution, and I'm gonna quote from just a portion of that, that be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the County of Iredal expresses its concern to Governor McCrory, the Secretary of North Carolina Department of Transportation, and the North Carolina Board of Transportation, that we consider alternatives to reduce the scope and cost of the project while still accomplishing the project goals, consider the viability of traditional funding mechanisms and processes, and delay obligating the state to this current agreement until a full review by all concerned governmental organizations. I wish that everybody had taken our suggestion, because we might be in a different position. The further this has gone along, the greater the financial penalties for deciding to adopt a different course. But you know, as significant as they may be, and it is problematic, the best way to stop from getting deep into a hole is to stop digging. And so the sooner they stop digging, the less costly it'll be. What's never been really computed, to my satisfaction, and I don't know that it could be computed, but is not just the cost, but the opportunity cost. If you basically have a prescription for traffic jam on 77, turning it into a parking lot in the general-purpose lanes, in order to create the demand in the toll lanes to pay the investor Centra off, you are also constricting or limiting your ability to construct even secondary or ancillary expansions, like widening 115, or widening other projects that would relieve congestion. So for a 50-year period, I don't think anyone's come near to calculating what the opportunity cost for this county and for North Mecklenburg communities would be in terms of lost business revenues, the loss of economic development, and so on. I think if you could figure out that formula and plugged in a few numbers, that, as large as these numbers sound, that they would pale in comparison over a 50-year period to what we are passing on to the next three generations. So there's a motion by Commissioner Robertson that is on the table. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. And thank you, Commissioner Robertson, for the time and the amount of work that you've put in for several years as a member of this Charlotte Regional Transportation Organization and its precursor. Okay, moving on. There is no public, there is a public comment period tonight, but no one has signed up. Does anybody feel moved by the spirit to comment publicly about anything? We're hearing none. We'll move on to item 13, any new business? Hearing none. Mr. Smith, if you'll please render the county manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm gonna pass a handout down to you. And this is a, if you're used to seeing these, this is a condensed financial report. Just want to point out a few things for your information. As you know, on the top, top table is revenue, bottom table is expenditures. We're at our halfway point in this fiscal year, and if you go down to the bottom of the revenues, we're running at almost 60% of budgeted revenues. Sales taxes, you'll notice, are at 30%, but as you remember, we run, we lag four months behind, and it has not hit December yet, and that's, you know, obviously the biggest month. So doing good from a revenue perspective, and also from an expenditure perspective. Spending is at just under 43%. This is pretty typical of how we do business, and I consider this a strong report. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer those.
Please pass on our appreciation to all the Departments for their attention to the bottom line and delivering services to the people of this county efficiently and effectively, and for the most bang for the buck. Also, to our tax collector, Mr. Purchase, for, as always, exceeding the performance levels of, I think, any of his contemporaries. And so, all in all, outstanding update. Thank you to our Finance Department as well, for the hard work they do of managing this on a monthly basis.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to congratulate, again, our staff. They do a good job in maintaining the expenditure side of this thing. You've got a pretty good spread there. I guess, to some degree, I've cultivated the image of Commissioner cloudy, but I'd continue to issue caution. I read the shortest interview of an economist the other day, Martin Felstein, he's one of my favorite. He said, 20 years ago, for the last 20 years, there have been four assumptions that ever economists based his predictions on. Number one, housing prices in America would never decline. Number two, the Saudis would always move to put a floor under the price of oil. Number three, no eurozone country would ever consider default. And number four, the Chinese has an insatiable appetite for raw materials. All of those assumptions have been violated, therefore, I have no earthly idea what's going to happen. So I would continue to urge caution, because nobody running things has any sense anymore. So just be careful.
President Comey, accept it, please.
I was talking about.
Yes.
Let it to you north of here. Thank you.
I've got two more things, actually. One, on that same note, we're gonna officially kick off our budget process tomorrow. Department heads will get their budget packages, and we'll maintain the same philosophy. I'll be meeting with you all middle of February, but figure on keeping the same philosophy as we always do come budget time. And then, finally, put a lot of effort into the animal control ordinance, the Board did. Just as a reminder to the public, by the end of January, exotic pets need to be registered, and we have had zero so far. So we have about a week and a half, and we know of at least one in this county, so just encourage anyone with an exotic pet to register that pet.
Where's George?
No, I think we have. Thank you.
Mr. Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Bowles and I'd like to stand and take a bow right now.
Your diligence in working through the thicket of animal control issues is much appreciated, and...
We deserve every bit of your thanks.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering how many rock pythons are in Third Creek right now.
And I know that Curious George, the MacGyver...
Don't. You're going down, but Zootastic.
Seriously.
George is at Zootastic. Is that what you heard? Really?
Well, we can all enjoy Curious George then. Okay. Thank you. Mr. Smith? At this time, we will move into a closed session briefly for personnel matters pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11, Subchapter A6.
Okay, we will resume with our open session. There's no specific action to be taken. Is there any further business? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I think that's a unanimous motion. By acclamation, we adjourn.